Call the meeting of county council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Optional prayer, Mrs. Law, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I think I start with one of our council members, Lawson's brother-in-law, last evening. Coral Anderson's brother-in-law, Keith Kowinski, passed away, and I'd like to just pause for a moment and... Now let us pray. We come to you, O God, to thank you for what is good, to cry out for what is wrong, and to ask for help and guidance to do our part. We open our hearts with desire to be attentive to our duties and not be distracted by the world around us. We desire to be humble and not listen to our pride. May our priorities become clear, may our vision be focused, and may we hear the problems of others. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Law. Mr. Anderson, Micah Nolan says to you and your family, "I wasn't aware of it." Before we start tonight's meeting, I would just like to welcome all of you officially to Northeast Township. We have in our audience tonight, August Neff is one of the township supervisors, so we thank you for hosting us tonight. And with that, we will get on with the meeting, hearing of the public. Does anybody from the public wish to be heard tonight? Oh, we didn't do roll call. I apologize. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Faust?
Here. Now the hearing of the public. Does anybody from the public wish to be heard tonight? Nobody called in ahead of time? So if you could, just come to the podium. If you could just state your name and the municipality in which you live, and then I'll give you three minutes.
Yeah, hi. I'm Andrew Finan, from right here in Northeast Township. It's been over a year since the council committed to backing the community college. There doesn't seem to be a whole lot of, looking through the minutes of the council, I don't see a whole lot of discussion being made on that. I do see where, in December, the state education financial person had submitted a bunch of questions that was answered by the county executive in February, and those bring into question, and legitimately so, a lot of the financing associated with how this community college county portion is going to be funded. When this project was being pitched to the public, and you've made the decision to back it, but when this was pitched to the public, it was said that the tuition was going to be 2,400, rising to 2,800, and the plan submitted back and forth to the state is already over 3,000 and climbing. There's the, the funding was supposed to be projected, is projected to be in the plan to be 5.5 million plus coming out of the gaming funds, and it hasn't hit that even in these years projected. So I hope that that council is paying attention to this, because it doesn't seem like the numbers are hitting the way they're supposed to. Whether you think the college is a good idea or not, well, that's another question. But it sure seems like the finances aren't falling into place as was projected. So I just hope that, you know, they figure out getting another million once the stadium loan is paid off, but once the gaming funds start getting committed to the community college operating expenses, that revenue stream will always be committed to that, because the community college will, by plan, will never be self-sustaining. So I encourage you to take a good, hard look at it and realize, and you should be talking about it, and you should be getting some good answers, and it's not too late to pull the plug on it. Because if it went through originally as planned, you'd be looking at least a couple hundred thousand dollars coming out of somebody's program. So I encourage you to do that. It's not too late.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to be heard tonight? Seeing none, come forward. We will move to approve the minutes of July 4th, regular meeting, 24th. Move by Mr. Leon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any changes or corrections to those minutes? On the minutes, roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. And before we get on to reports, I just want to recognize, Mr. Bob Mazza has walked in. He's also one of the Northeast Township supervisors, so we thank you for your hospitality tonight.
Did you bring any wine?
(laughing) It's out in the truck, I think, so we'll have to get it after the meeting. Next is reports of county officials. The county executive order designated. Thank you, Mr. Sparber. Finance committee, Mrs. Fatika.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee met at four o'clock on August 15th and agreed to put on the agenda under all business items A and B, and under new business items A, and then C through H, and N through S. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Fatika regarding the finance committee report, or the meeting for that matter? Personnel committee, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personnel committee met Thursday, August 15th, 2018, at 4:00 p.m. We agreed to put under new business items I through N. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Horton? Reports of other members of council, Mr. Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't be long, and I'm never really long-winded in this case, but I want to talk about the three-year plan. We usually send our response prior to September to the county executive for review of the three-year plan that they sent to us in July. First of all, I would like to thank Andre and Carol for their input in this particular plan. Year after year, we continue to put in quite a few of the same issues in the particular plan. And it's appropriate to say, okay, we continue to oppose unfunded mandates from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and federal government, and that's quite obvious, and there's nine issues that are involved here. One of the issues I'm really concerned about is to make a decision regarding the former Pleasant Ridge Manor East property to either repurpose or demolish it. No member of this council is in favor of selling any part of that particular piece of property. You know, and to be, and in my own conclusion, as far as the plan is concerned, first of all, you have to understand that three-year plan is a document to try to determine what's going to be needed in the next three years. And in doing that, you know, you can't be perfect. It certainly sometimes just falls to the wayside, some of the issues that are involved. But all told, I believe that council is trying to respond to the three-year plan and inform the county executive that we are interested in doing something as far as Pleasant Ridge Manor East is concerned. That's one of our big issues. All of the rest are usually generic anyway as to what is going on in the three-year plan. And it's based solely on current information and recommendation by the administration, and is therefore subject to change as warranted. That's what we also put in. I don't have much more to say about the three-year plan. Like I said, I believe that we should follow at least that one issue that I'm quite concerned about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my report.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. I wholeheartedly agree with your comments regarding Pleasant Ridge. We've gotten a report in the past that it's cheaper to repurpose that building than to tear it down and build new, so I would hope we could find some sort of solution. Mr. Horton also asked to give a report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, colleagues, members of Northeast community. I come before you here again this August 21st, 2018, and to sadly state that it's been 291 days since the USA Today 24 Wall Street article came out citing Erie, Pennsylvania as the worst place in America for African-Americans to live. And I'm embarrassed, as I stated every time, that basically I haven't been able to do anything. I'm embarrassed when I look at this entire agenda, and I see that there's nothing on it that speaks to the situation of poor people, regardless of which side of the tracks they're on, whether they're white, or black, or Nepali, or Bosnian, or Afro-American, or African. It's just poor people. So I see that there's a lot of things going on in the district that I represent, and truly, truly, we're really, really blessed to have all of the development that's taking place. But we were sold a bill of goods, poor people, and it told us about the rising tide lifting all boats. There's some boats not being lifted. So what we have throughout the second legislative district, where I represent the constituents and the people who live there, where I might also add, part of that district is the 16501 zip code, which has been designated as the poorest zip code in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the silence that I hear coming from this body, and from our city counterparts, and from our counterparts in the suburbs, in the regions too, because don't make no mistake about it, as goes the city goes, the things that go around the city. But the silence is definitely from all legislative bodies, this one city, school board, state legislator, candidates for governor and the governor, whom I appreciate very, very much for the investment that he has made in the second legislative district. I was here last week, and he brought 16 million dollars, and 12 of that went to the district, went to the Erie Events Convention Center, fixed a field, fixed up a stadium, went to someone who has a billion dollars' worth of assets, and that they own the Warner Theater, the Jerry Ullrich Park, the Erie Insurance Arena, the Sheraton, the Marriott, Tupac and Rams, and the convention center itself, and the 600 million dollar prospective proposed development site at the GAF site. I didn't see anything for poor people. There's not a supermarket on the east block or the west block, below 26th Street. This is beautiful agricultural hub. Mr. Mazza, you can, we appreciate you and all that you do economically for the area. People in our neighborhood buying their vegetables from the shale gas station on 6th and Parade, or from Family Dollar or Dollar General. And the silence is definite. We award our RAPP funds or grants to developers to develop along the Bayfront. Our answer hasn't, the answer that we gave is, we'll do a 10-year lurcher, citywide lurcher from the city of Erie. Whether you support it or not, as I know members of this body support it. But I submit to you for argument that there's nothing blighted on the Bayfront, north of the Bayfront Highway in the city of Erie. No one should have a 10-year tax break. While the Erie School District has 40 kids to a classroom, and the test scores and the graduation rates are abysmal, as the employment rate for African-Americans and people of All one has to do is go around the corner and look at the beautiful field that the Northeast Great Pickers had, and then go up to Peach and Crab Street at Belitnikov Field, and you see the two-lane cinder road, cinder trail, probably the same cinders that Mr. Belitnikov ran on. His family should be embarrassed and should demand that they take his name off of it or fix it. And we have the audacity, I believe it's called the unmitigated gall, to suggest that there should be no taxes anywhere north of Bayfront Highway, i.e. the waterfront, our most prized asset, which would be akin to us not taxing Marcella Shale while we sit on the largest deposit in the world. So we're, we're going to ration off or give away the property that's already been balkanized and parceled off, our most, well, no, our second most prized asset. Because I truly believe that our first, our number-one prized asset are our children, although we don't treat them like that. There's a book that declares, "Show me where you spend your money, and I'll show you where your heart is." We're certainly not spending it on our children, and so we want to do 10-year tax abatements north of the Bayfront Highway, and the mayor is cheerleading this, and I pick up the paper and there's a million five deficit in the city of Erie. But he wants to give away tax breaks citywide. I pick up the paper, see opiate deaths. We spend a lot of money on gun deaths. Coroner said the city of Erie averaged six to eight gun deaths a year for 50 years, spiked up to 11 or 12. We spent a lot of money, millions of dollars, weed and seed, changed the name, called it Haven't gotten a return on our investment. But we looked at fund programs to incarcerate and to impede. And that's not what I came to Human Services County Government to do. So I look through here, and you'll hear them, because we're going to go through every one of them, so you don't have to take my word for it. You see something in there that addresses poor people, poor people's situation, I'm all ears. Because the rising tide isn't lifting all boats, it's kind of looking like Katrina around here. And it's affecting poor people and poor zip codes. Regardless of their ethnicity, I serve the most diverse district in the region, and that the new Americans are looking for affordable housing, housing that's not going to be so affordable when the gentrification settles. Because what we have now is a run on cheap property, all in the urban core. We have an Erie downtown development partnership we're grateful for. We know that if the will was there, we could fix the problem. They raised 40 million dollars in, what, four months? So we know we can fix the problem. We don't have the will. And so I'll say this, and maybe a couple other things. There should be no lurcher north of the Bayfront Highway. There should not be a 600 million dollar site lined up for 10 million or for a 10-year tax break. Anyone receiving RAPP or government grants in the millions should not be looking for a 10-year tax abatement. They, my friend, should be the person looking, asking, "Where do I pay my taxes?" And finally, I'm concerned at the way that this body has been operating over the last year, over this past year. It's a different environment than when I got here. And I'm not suggesting it's right or wrong. I'm saying that I'm concerned. And I believe that if we continue to operate in the manner that we, that we seem to have Well, I don't throw no rocks and hide my hand. I'll just say, I don't do clicks, and so if there's a pact or anything, if you're going to do that, make sure you don't violate sunshine on our acts, because people are And things have been turned upside down here. I won't, I think things should be done in the spirit of transparency. I think that if you're going to do things, you should do it openly. I think we should allow the public in on that discourse, everything from lurcher to what we're going to do, or if we're not going to do anything for poor people. We should tell them that, too. When I came here, Human Services was about people. Wasn't always about economic development, but I get it. It was about children, seniors, the mentally disabled, and those who were least amongst And I think we're getting away from that in this sentence. And so, being in the first year of a second, four-year term, all of my efforts will be regenerated into seeing, what will you do for poor people? And a lot of this stuff that comes down here, I won't be able to support going forward, because I'm not, not that it's not a good idea or anything, but it's not, it's not a great priority. Because unless and until we put our children and our people, our number-one asset, as our priority, it's going to be problematic. And to do anything with the tax abatement stuff while our schools, district is in it, I don't care if you have money-based housing and the rent coming, the people coming, if you have a broken school district, you got problems. Anything that's not going to shore up our children, and shore up those who are least amongst us, I won't be able to support. And, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your patience, and that of my colleagues, and you in the audience. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Anybody else want to give a report that maybe didn't indicate so in caucus? Okay, moving on, Mr. Rastetter.
My comment on Andre's oral speech there, you've heard it enough times, if you find me.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to old business, second reading of ordinance number 84, please, and title
The second reading of ordinance number 84, 2018, amending the administrative code of Erie County Department of Planning, Article 2C9.
So?
Moved by Mrs. Law.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any questions or comment?
Comment?
Mr. Horton.
Yeah. Ordinance number 84 is, back in February, I received a call asking me to choose from a list of people that the planning committee had submitted.
That's the next one. I don't want to cut you off. It's about the next one. That you're, you're concerned with, if you want.
Okay.
All right. I don't want you to realize that later, and then morning.
Mine's on.
Okay. All right, so is that okay then?
Yes.
All right.
That's fine.
All right. You'll be able to hear what he wants to say in just a minute. Just be patient. Any further comments or questions regarding ordinance number 84? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 95, please, and title only.
The second reading of ordinance number 95, 2018, amending bylaws in the administrative code for the Erie County Planning Commission, repealing inconsistent language.
Also moved? Moved by Mr. Leon. Seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion? Mr. Horton?
Yes. This ordinance is to right of wrong, that was done erroneously by this body and the Erie County Planning Committee. I vaxxed the solicitor for an opinion, which he returned the opinion. I vaxxed Mr. Smith to send it all back out to you. My colleagues, you should all have it before you. Basically, what it did was put the onus, or the authorization, or the responsibility back to council to be able to appoint from their home district, as opposed to appointing from a list of names submitted by another body, and thereby realigned us to the Home Rule charter.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Mrs. Fatika?
Yes. It is my understanding that in 2016, the Erie County Planning Commission bylaws were changed to have membership that was compliant with the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code. The bylaws were adopted by the Planning Commission as well as county council. To ensure municipalities are recognized, each municipality would have an opportunity to nominate an individual to the Erie County Planning Commission. A goal, as stated under the membership of the Erie County Planning Commission, reads, "In order to ensure that the interests of Erie County and its municipalities are represented, the governing body shall ensure the diversity of experience, expertise, interests in composition of the Planning Commission. Members of various professions related to civil engineering, municipal governance, local land use regulation, or citizen planning should be sought out for membership, and sitting members of the Planning Commission should endeavor to increase their own level of planning education through their time on the board. I believe the only way to achieve that goal is to vote no on this ordinance." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Law?
I've attended the Erie County Metroplanning Commission meetings for over 26 years, and the reason it's been so long is because I was appointed as liaison in Fairview Rural Council in Fairview, Iowa. At that time, Dave Stelling was the director, and there was an executive board of non-voting members and liaisons from all of the other municipalities. At that time, the planning executive board chose the members that they felt would be a good, do a good job from all over the county to balance the board and represent the entire county. The next director was Janet Anderson, and then Jake Welch. During that time, the voting members grew to at least 40. When Kathy Ross took over the directorship, she discovered that there were too many voting members, and proceeded to check all the past planning department minutes and consulted with the state planning bylaws. It took more than a year to organize what they have today. This new set of bylaws has given council, for the first time, a vote in who is on the board, something that they have never had until ordinance 62 was passed. I will not be voting for this ordinance due to the fact that on December 13th, 2016, we passed ordinance number 62, and we all agree, our attorney received all the agendas and accompanying information that was able to inform, and was able to inform us at that time, that in his opinion, that we should not vote for this as it was presented, but this was not done, so there must not be a violation at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Law. Anybody else?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've never, you know, I've never pulled any punches about how I feel of having someone make an appointment in my district other than me. I fought for this many, many years, even on the convention center authority, and I understand the comments made by everyone here, and I'll abide by whatever the majority rules. I have a problem with that. Carol, you indicated that these individuals represent the entire county. Let me remind you, and everyone else here, seven members of this council represent the entire county. And that's the reason why I feel that if somebody said to me, "Well, you can pick from one of these three or five people. They live in your district," one of these three or five people, they live in your district, but they're not gonna tell me who I can pick or who I can't pick. I wanna be able to make my own decision, I wanna be able to make my constituency, I wanna make that decision because I'm elected to this office, just like everyone else is. And as far as, like I said, we represent the entire county. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Mr. Horton?
Sure. Um, I'll read the opinion of the solicitor. It says, Andres, requested, I review the Erie County Planning Commission Resolution Number Sixty-two, adopted by council on December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, the bylaws of the Planning Commission and the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code Act of nineteen sixty-eight, July thirty-first. Under the Planning Code, the governing body of any municipality such as Erie County should have the power to create or abolish by ordinance a planning commission or department. Further, section two oh three of the Planning Code, fifty-three subsection one oh two oh three, provides, "All members of the Planning Commission shall be appointed by the appointing authority of the municipality. All such appointments shall be approved by the governing body, except where the governing body is the appointing authority. The governing body and appointing authority as defined, defined under the Planning Code are the township supervisors in counties of the second through eighth classes or is designated in the law provided for the form of government, in this case, the Erie County Home Rule Charter." Thus, the appointment of members of the Planning Commission as contemplated under the municipality's Planning Code is no different than the appointment process under other authorities and boards which council has established. All appointments to the commission made by the county executive must be with the advice and consent of county council, or to put it another way, the appointment of the county executive must be approved by county council. The Planning Code does not require the makeup of the Planning Commission to consist of heads of municipalities, although council could agree to limit their appointments to heads of municipalities within their respective districts. I have no idea whether council agreed to choose their appointments from a list of municipalities within their respective districts, however, they are certainly not bound to do so. Although not required by the Planning Code, the county executive can appoint, again with council's consent at-large members, such as the representative, representative from the Erie County Association of Township Officials and the Erie County Association of Boroughs. The bylaws of the Planning Commission reiterate the appointment process found under Resolution Number Sixty-two again. The county council may leave the appointment process as is or rewrite the appointment process to conform to the Home Rule Charter. Any further questions, please call. Uh, again, I, I cite you to, paragraph the bills that you have, at the third paragraph from the bottom, it says, we're cer-, I'm certainly not bound, uh, to do so. Uh, and, and again, uh, I think it's a, uh, a dangerous precedence to start messing around with the Home Rule Charter. Uh, if we're gonna start taking subcommittees or committees or, uh, planning commissions or boards bylaws, and if we're gonna allow them to usurp the Home Rule Charter, uh, I don't think that that's what the, um, what the charter had in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Mrs. Law.
I'd like to make that a little clearer as to what he was talking about. Each municipality, and I'm sure that Northeast understands, each municipality has the right to have their own planning commission. Then we have the planning, uh, department for Erie County, and with a foreign commission there using the members, most of them from your particular planning commissions. But that makes it a little clearer as to what he was talking about.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just, I'll just make a couple of comments. As wise and august as this body is, most of the time, I say that tongue-in-cheek, uh, what we approved in two thousand and sixteen, uh, I think we were in error, and we need to correct that. Uh, no matter what we may have decided then, I think Tom has made it crystal clear that , uh, the appointment process that's been approved by the Planning Commission is not comport with the, uh, Home Rule Charter and the Administrative Code, and I think we ought to, we ought to put those things back into alignment. Uh, I agree with, uh, both, uh, Mr. Leon and Mr. Horton and their sentiment that if you have an appointment from your district, certainly, local planning commissions and local municipalities can and should recommend people to appoint, but in the end, uh, it's the council's persons, uh, the council person from that district to be able to, uh, make, uh, that appointment. And the first thing I would do, and I think all of us would do, is to contact our local municipal officials to see who would be a good particular fit, and if it happened from my district, it happens to come from Northeast, and that upsets Harbor Creek, well, maybe the next time the appointment comes up, like, we can choose somebody from Harbor Creek, but just because they're from, they live in a different municipality doesn't mean that they're gonna ignore the concerns that other municipalities have. Uh, that, whoever may be from Northeast, if they need to contact the person from Harbor Creek or vice versa, just like for council here, those issues bubble up to the top ultimately where, uh, they take input from the citizenry as to what should be done. Uh, and, you know, I, I think, you know, if you looked at the, when, if you try to please everybody, which I think is what, uh, we're trying to do here, a little bit too much, I don't say that critically, um, I think we're trying to do the right thing, but you get what we had before, where you had forty voting members, which tried to please everybody and please nobody. Uh, you look at what we have now, again, it tries to please, I think, in the phrase "too cute by half," as I use that with Mrs. Fatika, I'm not trying to, uh, hide it in here when I said that earlier. We need to have confidence in district-wide representation, uh, on all boards and authorities, that if this body here tonight can represent all the concerns of county government for all the different departments and all the different things that we have to deal with, I think that can translate to the different boards and authorities that we have, uh, and the appointment process that's called for in the Home Rule Charter and, uh, the Administrative Code does that with the seven districts and then two at-large appointees that the, the county executive would have, uh, full, uh, appointment power over. Uh, I don't know where the vote is gonna go, but I would suggest if everybody is amenable or enough people are amenable, is there, uh, appetite to table this so we could have a fuller discussion with Tom regarding his latest, uh, opinion, uh, to try to mollify all the different concerns that we have tonight.
I have no objection to going back to Tom.
Well, there would have to be a motion on the floor to table and approve that, so seeing none, we've had a move and seconded and comment. Mr. Smith, call for the vote, please. The, a vote yes would approve these changes in front of us.
On ordinance ninety-five, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Our motion's defeated. Moving on to new business, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda, and in the manner in which you wish to amend it?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Okay, on the new business, I would like to consider second reading for ordinance one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight, one oh nine, one ten, one eleven, one twelve, and one fourteen.
And also, could you, uh, maybe include on that your motion, Mr. Leon, to add, uh, the appointment of, uh, Tim Connolly to the amendment ID board?
Yes, I would, uh, also amend it to include that Tim Connolly. I'll second.
Okay, that's moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any comment or discussion regarding amending tonight's agenda? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On the amendment of the agenda, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have a first reading of ordinance number one oh four, please, and title only. For those of you, before you begin, are, that may be new to council meetings, ordinances require two readings. Often enough times, we will move many of them to second readings just to take advantage of whatever action, uh, we have in front of us, for instance, four or five of these are donations to the library. Uh, then if you happen to see a resolution or appointments to a different board or authority, those require just one vote, so we'll proceed with action tonight. Mr. Smith, ordinance one oh four, please.
A first reading of ordinance number one hundred four, twenty-eighteen, amending the Erie County Human Relations Commission ordinance, Article Five, Section A, powers and duties.
First reading of ordinance number one oh five, please, and title only.
A first reading of ordinance number one hundred five, twenty-eighteen, amending the Administrative Code of Erie County, Human Relations Commission, uh, for, C four personnel.
A second reading of ordinance number one oh six, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred six, twenty-eighteen, eighth, twenty-eighteen library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of one thousand three hundred fifty dollars for donation from friends of the library in memoriam of Margaret Stewart.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one oh six, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Also, you will see, ordinance number ninety-five is a bit of anomaly. We usually do not have a lot of discussion at this particular meeting on our ordinances. That oftentimes occurs at a finance meeting, which we referenced earlier, uh, that occurs the previous Thursday, and also our caucus, which proceeds this particular meeting. So, a lack of discussion wouldn't indicate, our tonight away, would not indicate a lack of discussion overall. Mr. Smith, the second reading of ordinance number one oh seven, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred seven, twenty-eighteen, ninth, twenty-eighteen library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of seven hundred fifty dollars for donation from friends of the library for the Dank family memorial.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one hundred seven, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Uh, a second reading of ordinance number one oh eight, please, Mr. Smith, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred eight, twenty-eighteen, tenth, twenty-eighteen library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of seven hundred and fifty dollar donation from friends of the library for National Summer Learning Day.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one hundred eight, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
I'm sorry, where are we, Mr. Smith?
I'm sorry, Mr. Leon, on one oh eight?
This is ordinance one oh eight.
Mrs. Law?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
On ordinance number ninety-five, if you voted no, you wouldn't wanna sign it. We'll rectify that, Mrs. Law, you don't have to sign it. That's why I apologize for the chatter back and forth. Mr. Smith, roll call, please, on ordinance number one oh, uh, second reading of ordinance number one oh nine, and title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred nine, twenty-eighteen, eleventh, twenty-eighteen library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of one hundred forty-five dollars for book endowment from Erie Regional Library Foundation.
So moved. Moved by Mr. Horton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance number one oh nine? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance one oh nine, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number one ten, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred ten, twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen library fund budget revised revenue of twenty-four thousand two hundred fifty dollars for revenue line adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one ten, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
I think I jumped ahead on my notes. We on one eleven?
Yes, it is.
Second reading, please, of ordinance number one eleven, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred eleven, twenty-eighteen, twelfth, twenty-eighteen library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of twelve thousand two hundred nine dollars, do- donation from Erie Regional Library Foundation.
So moved. Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mr. Leon. Any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one hundred eleven, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Okay, a second reading, please, of ordinance number one twelve, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred twelve, twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen library fund budget revised expenditures of fifteen thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and elimination of three positions, creation of two branch manager positions.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one hundred twelve, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
A first reading, please, of ordinance number one thirteen, and title only.
A first reading of ordinance number one hundred thirteen, twenty-eighteen, third, twenty-eighteen public safety fund budget, supplemental appropriation of fifty thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for addition of six telecommunicator positions from consolidation with Erie County Communications, East County Communications Center.
A second reading, please, of ordinance number one fourteen, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number one hundred fourteen, twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen drug and alcohol services fund budget revised expenditures and amendment of ordinance number one hundred two, twenty-eighteen, to place positions and correct department.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika and seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance one hundred fourteen, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
First reading, please, of ordinance number one fifteen, and title only.
A first reading of ordinance number one hundred fifteen, twenty-eighteen, forty-second, twenty-eighteen general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of forty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and elimination of three positions for reorganization of Human Relations Commission.
First reading of ordinance number one sixteen, and title only, please.
A first reading of ordinance number one hundred sixteen, twenty-eighteen, forty-third, twenty-eighteen general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of forty-four thousand and six dollars and creation of two positions for reorganization of Human Relations Commission.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Resolution Number Forty-six, which is the approval of the county council response to the operational plan? Moved by Mr. Leon, seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On Resolution Forty-six, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
I'd like to, uh, propose the reappointment of Amy Gander to Human Relations Commission, the appointment of Dr. Timothy Stoops to Human Relations Commission, and the appointment of Mary Jean Taylor, uh, to the Erie County Board of Health, along with the appointment to, of Tim Conley to the Erie County M H I D board. I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mr. Anderson to handle all those appointments in one motion. Is there any objection to that? Okay, so all four of those appointments, roll call, please, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Smith.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?